You're in design today.
Do you have a timeline to get done with something? Like I know. So it's, uh... No, um, the two streets was Clark and... Clark and Hickory, yes, that was the problem, or is that because it was, uh...
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. I was taking a phone call.
That's okay. Hopefully. Uh, let me find... It's in the, in the field area there?
It's in the lawn.
The lawn is, is it near the, uh, you know how there's an electric box there? Alright, I'll see if I can find out. I don't know, that's the one thing I know of. What are you doing here? I'll see if I can find out. The only thing I could think of, the last I heard, is a wing on supplies. Okay, sounds good. Amy, we'll be able to print off, uh, one of those, uh, solar permit process things we have? Do you know if it's on our website somewhere? I was gonna see the match, what was in it, what's that? Or, or if you know where it fits on our webpage, I think. Cause it doesn't look like the same one that I saw, but I might have only a draft version of it. Something else broken?
Well, I wasn't around to check the agenda for you. I'm gonna have something on here about the, the treaty removal, that they just want to do that. Authorized, listed off the board for that.
Uh, are you guys ready to go for a bid package? I didn't know that, I, no one gave me anything that you...
Well, we haven't, we haven't got it done yet, if you would authorize this, you know. They've got specs on it.
So you want us to approve the bid, go up the bid?
Auth, authorize.
I think you guys made a bid package first for us to do that, you know? Okay, maybe I have to process that, I'll get it on the next one then.
Okay, but we'll go ahead and get it written.
No, the other, the other part about the part up top, Tom was looking into the junky gun thing, you'll figure out what happened with that. The junky gun.
That's the junky gun.
That's the thing that was supposed to clean up the building a half hour ago.
Oh, yes, yeah.
But I will get the, uh, on the next... Amy, does that person that put in the application need that approved, or couldn't wait till next meeting then, or something?
Call the Oglesby City Council meeting to order?
Augubright?
Here.
Colin and his ass, Curran?
Here.
Udis?
Here. Here. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and in this law with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is approved minutes from the August first, twenty twenty-two regular meeting. And before we get into it, I, um, I've got some, uh, issues on a couple things in here. On, uh, page two, that's all I had it down here. In the, uh, first paragraph, and I lost my notes. Um, it says that, uh, I would support, uh, I could support fifty percent of the, of the funds, uh, the gaming funds, uh, to be spent on Walnut Street. I've listened to the, um, uh, to the audio. Uh, I can't get that out of there. If I happen to misspoke, or we got it wrong, um, I, I, I cannot support that. And for the simple reason that the gaming fees have to be deposited in the general fund to, to do anything else. We, what we do with, to do with stuff on Walnut Street, we take it out of the, uh, hotel motel fact, uh, tax, or we can, uh, take it out of, uh, TIF, I'm not opposed to doing that. But I cannot, uh, I, I cannot support a position where we're gonna tie the city council that they have to spend X amount of do- dollars on Walnut Street. The second thing I've got is in the last paragraph on page two, um, I've talked to the residents and, uh, they want an exit to, uh, to the alley. That was, that's not true, that's an error. Um, and on page three, um, states, uh, the resident about offering sewer credits for sod insulation or watering lawns. I know we, um, we kinda talked that to death, uh, and I don't think we agreed to do anything on that. And on the last page, um, on the fifty-fifty tickets, uh, would be donated to Cabo. It's actually gonna be donated to Oglesby Way. Um, a number of bars bought, uh, tickets, uh, several books, uh, Bulldogs was, uh, one of the, uh, people that, uh, sponsored, uh, trophies. So with that, I've sent, buddy's got any other comments, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the August first, twenty twenty-two regular meeting.
With those corrections, correct mayor?
Second? Or did you make a motion, I'm s-
I just asked with the corrections that you just stated, because I don't agree with one of them.
Pardon?
I do recall you saying that fifty percent, that's why I can't vote in favor of that, but a motion's been made.
Well, we're not voting to, to approve anything, we're just voting for the minutes right now.
Just to approve the minutes.
So, I, I do remember something about fifty percent, I don't know if, I don't know if it's exactly as stated here that you can support fifty percent, but I do remember something said about fifty percent, because that's where I made the thing going, well, if one's at seventy-five and the others at fifty, can we meet? I said something about that, so I don't, so something was said about fifty percent.
Well, it's, uh, it, it's...
And I didn't say it, so I was good, so...
And I, and I did, and I listened to the minutes, and my hearing is bad anyway, and I, uh, I can't even understand what's on the audio.
Okay. I don't have an issue with that then, that's fine. Uh, I'm, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, uh, with the corrections noted.
Can I ask what happens if I don't second it, but I'll second it anyway, cause...
Okay, let's get it done.
What does happen if I don't second that?
I don't know. It's a good question, we have the attorney here.
I think you'd have to revise the minutes and move, move them again. So we have a motion and a second here.
Augubright?
Aye.
Colin, or, sorry, Curran?
Aye.
Udis?
No.
Navara?
Aye.
We have public comments on agenda items, I know there's a number of people here, uh, that's probably wanna get down to, um... Got my... On, on the, uh...
The drainage issue at Heritage and Oakwood Avenue.
Yes. On number twelve, uh, why don't we just, uh... Would, would you prefer to let them speak when we get to that point?
It's, it's up to you, you certainly could do that, Dom, or they could speak now, um...
Why don't we wait until we get to that, uh, spot on the, on the agenda? If that would be okay? Is, are there any other comments on any other agenda items? Okay, we'll move... Uh, I need a motion second to approve bills as presented for payment?
I will make a motion to approve bills as presented for payment.
Second.
Augubright?
Abstain.
Curran?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, the next number seven is, uh, actually, I, I need a motion to table it till next week. Um, we got it on agenda a little bit ahead of ourselves.
I'll make a motion, we hold off on introduction of Oglesby newest police officer until next meeting.
Second.
Augubright?
Aye.
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 Aye. Next is approved request from Holy Family School for the Holy Family Shuffle to be held on October first, twenty twenty-two.
I will make a motion to approve the request from Holy Family School for Holy Family Shuffle to be held on October first, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Augubright?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
Udis?
Aye.
Aye.
Next on the agenda, uh, we've been, uh, the Illinois Valley, uh, Chamber of Commerce, uh, has requested, uh, that we not take any action and remove that, this from the agenda.
Can I ask why?
I think there's a mix-up on the, uh, the amount of cost, uh. They were asking us for a twenty-five hundred dollar donation. I think they got into it and then found themselves that it would cost thirty thousand dollars or some ridiculous amount to have it done, so...
Sounds good.
Next on the agenda is approval to seek bids for construction of a city-owned parking lot located at two forty-six East Walnut Street, Oglesby. Uh, there's a bid in, uh, an estimate, uh, cost, uh, from our engineers. It's forty-three thousand, three hundred ninety-nine, or forty-three thousand, nine hundred ninety-five dollars. And seventy-four percent of that would come from TIF. My math is right, it's thirty-three thousand, three hundred. Uh, the rest would become from general fund. If I could convince, I could use, uh, hotel motel tax with it, I would try.
Do we need that specifically in the motion of where it's coming from?
Why can't we use all of it?
We can only use seventy-four percent, from what I understand.
Generally, it's seventy-four percent out of the tip.
Be moved.
But I have to clarify with attorneys that it's all of it.
Okay.
And to answer your question, Jason, you do not have to put that in the motion, you can just let it...
Just approve it and we'll, okay.
You'll deal with that down the line.
Alright, I'll make a motion to, uh, to seek bids for the construction of a city-owned parking lot located at two forty-six East Walnut Street, Oglesby, Illinois.
Second.
Augubright?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
Udis?
Aye.
Navara? Aye.
Request for, request the consideration of a text amendment from the planning commission. We have to... Excuse me. We have to refer this to the planning commission so they can make a recommendation for, for this amendment. And that's for the sign that Mr. Salsa wants to put up. Am I correct?
If I can chime in a little bit here, Dom...
Please do.
Um, your, um, municipal code does not allow what are called freestanding signs in this type of district. It does in other districts, but not in your downtown business district. Um, they've requested to use a pole that's already there, that had a sign on it, which has been gone for more than ninety days, so it's not grandfathered in anymore. So in order to entertain legitimately a request to use that pole for a sign, you would have to do a text amendment to your zoning code to allow freestanding signs in this type of, uh, zoning district. Um, my suggestion would, a- a- and I should back up maybe and say, the only people that can make requests for text amendments is either the council or the planning commission itself. So my recommendation to Ken was that the council decide how they wanted to handle it and then refer to the planning commission for consideration. We'll have to publish a hearing notice. My suggestion would be that if you wanna do this, we would do it before the next council meeting on probably September sixth, Amy, cause the fifth is Labor Day, correct?
Yeah.
And the request you could make is just to allow them carte blanche in, in this type of district, or to allow them with a special use permit, meaning that they would have to request a special use permit that would have to be discussed before somebody could put another sign in this type of district, which would probably be my recommendation, so you could maintain some control over that. There must have been a reason at the time that the zoning code was adopted, uh, that, that plan was adopted, that they disallowed them in this district entirely. But my recommendation is that if you wanna move forward and entertain the request, that we refer to the planning commission for consideration of a text amendment to allow freestanding signs in this zoning district with, uh, special use permit.
Two, two things with that. We already have six items that were, we've approved to send to the planning commission, and so we need to do that anyways. The second thing is, don't we have a design and review board specifically?
But they cannot diverge from the fact that these are prohibited in that district.
Correct, but isn't the design and review board, they're the ones that consider talking about the changes that we have for the downtown district for signage and things like that?
I, I've never had any experience with your design and review board.
I think it's just, I think it's just like building and development side of the, like, individual, making sure they're up to the vision of downtown per building, not...
Cause I, I'd almost rather have them talk about that to say, hey, do we wanna have signs of whatever caliber, cause it, it's still good for Oglesby and all that kinda stuff? I think that's almost where we should start.
Well, I, the planning commission is the one that approves, it, it changes to your zoning ordinance. So I think that's the appropriate venue to have that discussion, Jason. If people from the design and review board wanna come to that meeting and talk about it with the planning commission, I think they can. But it's only the planning commission that can recommend the text amendment that would allow this type of sign, and then the council would...
I, I feel like we refer everything to the planning commission, so my question kinda is, what is the val- what is the purpose of the design and review board then? What, what do they do?
I think as Tom suggested, they just deal with buildings, individual buildings.
And it's gotta be something major, cause our building was not major enough to go to them, from what I understand, so... I don't know what major would be. Might be new development, that'd be about it, I would guess, but...
Ken and Jim and I have beat this to death and come up with this conclusion.
Okay, I tell you, alright.
So if you'd like, if you...
So we're sending the rest of the, like, the sidewalk spray paint and all that kinda stuff to this as well? So it's all being the same one, or, cause if we're paying to get it listed in the newspaper, I kinda wanna do it all at once, is what I'm thinking.
Well, we're, if we're doing them all at once, we'll need to fine-tune all of those requests, and it's gonna slow down this particular request. Cause we have to publish it fifteen days before the meeting, so that notice is gonna have to be published this week. I have the one for this ready to go, in the anticipation that you'd wanna move forward with this tonight. But if you wanna do them all at one time, we can delay them. But it's probably gonna delay the request until October, cause I'm not gonna be here at your second meeting in September. I can let you know.
Okay.
So either move forward with this one, and I can try to get as many of the other ones done as we can all agree upon, but otherwise, you know, we're gonna have to have a second planning commission hearing for those.
Let's get this one done.
That's what I was understanding you wanted to do. And the question then becomes, do you want it with a special use permit? Or do you wanna just do a text amendment to allow freestanding signs?
We, we need to control it.
I think so. That's my recommendation anyway, but it's your decision.
Alright, I'll make a motion to request consideration of full text amendment for, from the planning commission for special permit signs.
With special use permit.
Special use per- yes. I'll second it.
Augubright?
Aye.
Curran?
No.
Udis?
Aye.
Navara?
Aye. Yes.
Discuss and take action regarding draining issues at Heritage and Oakwood Avenue. And before we open it up for the public, let me read what Mr. Clennert has provided, you know, I'm having trouble with not only hearing my glasses. Attached are drawings for the drainage sheds that, that could be dug along the backside of the properties on the east side of Heritage Avenue. The ditch, the ditch would collect water from the backside of Heritage Avenue homes and the backside of many of the homes on the west side of Oakwood Avenue. It would start at the rim, uh, elevation of the last manhole of the, of the storm sewer system that discharges into McVeteran Park and continues south to the north property line of the home at, uh, twenty-two, two twenty-three A Oakwood Avenue. We estimate the cost of construction of the ditch to restore grass to be seventeen thousand dollars plus utility relocation costs. The ditch would cover service lines for electric telephone and cable TV for the homes on Heritage Avenue. I expect that each of those, uh, for every home will need to be lowered to be under the ditch. Uh, Mr. Clennert informed me just before the meeting, uh, in, uh, that, uh, our primary carry bill is in the middle of that ditch. So we would have to, um, put in a new, I would assume, a new primary feed down there. Yeah, why they... Why they did it the way they did, I have no idea.
It was the cheapest option, probably.
Pardon?
It's probably the cheapest option, I would guess, so...
No, no, how we put the cable in. From what I understand, were the transformers out, they swung way out and went down the middle instead of keeping it closer in line with the other transformers. Am I correct on that, Jim? Uh, this has been an, an ongoing problem for, for years. Um, originally, the, the land behind the, uh, townhouses was the place where the water kind of, uh, gathered, and then it, it, uh, was supposed to, um, drain down towards McVeteran Lake. Uh, it's been an ongoing problem, and, uh, this was a way that, uh, that we could take a look at how we could resolve the flooding issue. So, I'll give the public, if somebody wants to get it up and, uh, and make, give a presentation, just... The only thing I would do is please state your name and, um, kinda go from there.
My name is Dwayne South, DUA, DUAE and E S T A West, Route two twenty Heritage Avenue. And I am the president of Heritage Gardens, H O A. I've lived there for several years, and I personally met me or bar for taking one call last year. And actually, we got called two or three times. And then we met last month, and we discussed what is going on in the neighborhood. And what's happening on the west side of Oakwood and the east side of Heritage. There's continuous, um, pulling of water along the drains in, into the properties and also into the basements of several of the basements that live in our H O A. I appreciate the city taking, uh, responsibility for this, I don't know whose fault it is. I don't know when it happened, I don't think it's any of us personally, but I think it needs to be taken care of. Uh, I have residents who, whose basements are being flooded continuously, with many water rainfall that goes really quickly, you know, two to three inches long. I have to deal with that, me and the president of the association myself. I have water in my basement, I even have a check down in my backyard, I have a fence. So that I can not continuously have this problem. When we have a lot of water, it happens early in the spring, like it's maybe somewhere in the fall. There is a huge, small lake, as I would like to call it, if I like. It is right by Pat's house, it is immense, it is, the flooding takes the whole of the lot. And, and when that fills up, then it drains down, and then gets into our basements and ours. It goes as far south as the two twenty-three address that you would like to observe. And, um, if you guys have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Uh, I do have a question for you. This has been going on, from what I understand, for a number of years.
Yes, sir.
And we just, everybody has been, I'm assuming, just pointing the finger at somebody else's problem.
It seems to always be the other guy, or this guy's gonna take care of it, or this guy's gonna look into it, and nothing's been done over the years, nothing.
So, I do have a couple questions, so when you say a number of years, you don't mean two or three, you mean ten or twenty?
I have lived there personally six and a half years.
So through multiple administrations?
Several residents have told me, who have been there the full time with Heritage Gardens, that it is a, an ongoing problem.
Okay, uh, and the next question, when you said flooded into basements, you're meaning that they're having water going to their basements if their sump pumps were to fail?
No, the sump pumps can't keep up with it when they have the immense rain problem. Cause that water pools, I mean, so, it's very immense.
I'll be honest, my main concern is setting precedents, so I sympathize with your problem, I really do, and I know it's an issue, but if we open this door, where do we draw the line to any other resident who has draining issues? And there's a lot of them out there in, in Oglesby. Uh, us, Jason and I, living in an area that floods all the time, and our pump, sump pumps are on continuously. We don't flood, but we have standing water and have a major issue. Um, that's, that's my only concern, is not so much with funding this project as much as where are we at when the next guy comes in to ask for his, his, uh, problem to be funded as well.
My response back to you, sir, is would be this. We cannot go back and look at what, we're gonna, we can't go back and look at what's been done, nor look back at, or look towards the future. It is not the, the residents of Heritage Gardens' fault that the city approved those building permits, nor the owners of the residents' houses that those building permits were approved. So where does the fault lie? It's not with the people who purchased their houses. It has to lie... who purchased their houses. It has to lie within the city.
I don't know if I agree with that. I don't know if I agree with that statement. My understanding is what the city approved didn't, everything they approved was up to whatever code we were supposed to do at that time. So there was something that was overlooked. It, could it have been done better? Absolutely. But I don't necessarily believe that that certainly means that the fault is on the city. You know, homeowner.
You just said yourself, if something was overlooked, or if something could have been done differently, I think that right there, you're telling me, obviously, there's fault.
So, no, that's not what I'm saying. I don't believe that, legally speaking, I don't believe that to be accurate. If, just because there's a better way to do something, which I absolutely agree, in this case, there was a better way to do something, that doesn't necessarily mean, because a better way existed, that there's a party that's at fault legally for something. I don't believe that to be two true statements.
I'm not looking at legalities here, sir.
Okay.
What I'm looking at is just a solution.
Well, as I said from last, I think it was two years ago when this came up, I, I was one that made the motion and voted that, that we would pay the engineering fees to see what the solution could be. So we did do that. So this problem's existed for ten to twenty years, and the city did do some actions to look into a pro- a solution for you. And then here we are, two years later, and we paid engineering fees again to get it looked at. There's at least four areas of this, four areas of the city that I know that have other problems with drainage, and, and I get it. But, but if the city were to pay money to fix that when there's not a legal obligation, I don't know what would stop the rest of the residents that have issues in the city from coming to us and saying, hey, you spent seventeen thousand dollars and fixed these six residents' problems, do we get our five hundred thousand dollar fix for these, for these fifty homes over here? I hate to be the guy to give bad news, but I don't know what else to say about that.
So, so the flooding's just gonna continue, and that's, that's where we're at? I guess I'm just trying to feel where we're at with this.
There is a solution that's out there. And if, I, I think when you own a piece of property, you have some responsibility to maintain your property the best way you're gonna do it. I, I don't have a better answer for you on that.
Tony Stefano, two oh nine Oakwood Avenue, P. Mayor, I wanna start off by thanking you for your responsiveness. You came out the day of the flooding, and you and Commissioner Carr came out thereafter. I just wanna talk about this topic, because I have a little bit of experience in this field. I understand what you're saying about setting precedent, and the last thing that we're trying to do is help some of the adults. I don't think that's the case. We come here, and I thought we had a productive meeting that day. Your constituents are asking you for your help. They're not asking you for something for free. They're asking you for your help. So, we got to the car, but we did the study, and that's greatly appreciated, Commissioner, greatly appreciated. But we're at a point where I think we need to discuss it a little further. Nobody's asking you to make a motion tonight. I think the engineer came back with something, and I think we need to just sit back down and kinda hash it out a little bit. I don't think that's asking for much.
Obvious, so one thing that, that we, we can agree on, there's a problem. And we gotta, we gotta step to the plate and try to come up with a solution for it. And, and I understand when people are concerned about setting precedent. It's a, it's a big thing. This has been going on for twenty years, at least, and, and the finger pointing has gotta stop. We understand that there's a problem. How do we fix it? There's a multitude of ways.
Well, I would say respectfully. I don't think we're looking to do any finger pointing. I don't think anybody's trying to take this down a legal path. I don't think we're at that, I don't think we're trying to have that kind of conversation with you folks as the council. I think what we're trying to do is problem solve, so that we can resolve this problem and maybe set a good precedent, because now when folks in your area a lot are messing up, you can say that, okay, we worked with folks in Heritage Fields in Oakwood, and we were able to problem solve this, doing it this way, and it worked out well, but we can set a good precedent. So I think that's kinda all we're asking for. I don't think any of us are gonna get into this, just trying to finger point or bring up legal applications, because that's really, I don't think we're at that point. I think we can figure out this problem and get it done. We just need your help.
I'm certainly open to.
I, I got, I got one question that I, that I wanna get, get, get straightened in my, in my head. When the, when the townhouses were built, in the back of the townhouses, that, that was the collecting spot for the, for the drainage. And, and that was supposed to drain down to, to the creek. And then we put in some of the, some of the tiling and, and drainage to, to move the water away from there. It's my understanding that it just never resolved the problem, and it just got, got worse over the years.
It seems to me that's where we're at. As far as any of that kinda stuff, I know it's, I can speak to that, because he has a better grip on what was done before the fact. Scott Stabrakis, S T A V as in Victor, R A K A S, two seventeen B, Oakwood.
Wait, wait, just a second. I didn't catch that.
Scott Stabrakis, S T A V as in Victor, R A K A S, two seventeen.
I'm sure Amy's got it.
Okay. The only thing, I was just gonna make a comment, what sets us apart, I feel, is the extraordinary steps several of us have taken, because it's not just sump pumps running. It's Pat putting in two wells with three sump pumps in it, and still being overwhelmed. It's me with two sump pumps in my well, plus dropping a quarter horsepower of sump pumping well, and it's still flooding, because our wells keep pumping. I've got almost a horsepower and a half of sump pumps going, and when that water gets over our foundation, it's pouring into our basement, we can't pump it out quickly. So it's not just our sump pumps are running. I've lived in Illinois for sixty years. Sump pumps run. That's fine. The ground is wet. It's the fact that it puddles to the point where our houses are sitting in the lake, and the waters are just running into the basements. That's the problem.
Understood. Understood. Any more discussion?
Yes, I'd like to add one more thing. We're not looking for, for the city to foot the whole bill, okay? If there's some responsibility from, from our association, from individual residents, you know, we're gonna work with everybody. We just need to get it solved. That's all.
Well, so, and, and that's why we, we did do, paid for all the engineering to come out there and do that. Matter of fact, in the middle of the issue that you had, I did even have one of my street guys go and put a pump, I, I didn't think was gonna work, but I guess it did help, actually. There, there was an area that was low enough to where we were able to get a pump to help out. So I'm all for finding solutions whenever there's an emergency or something to get, to get through. But when you're talking about lasting infrastructure changes, I, I can't stress this enough, I'm so concerned about the precedence. And your area is, is less costly. I have no idea what the whole Cedar Creek subdivision is. There's two major areas there. There's the area that goes south, north and south, and then east and west, two separate sections. That could be a half million plus. There's a gentleman in the city, I don't remember his address, but his name's Wes Costelik. He has an area that unless we have a drought one year, to be able to get back there next to the railroad tracks to fix that solution, it's probably gonna be a million dollars plus to solve it for that. And, and the city doesn't necessarily have a reason to do it, because it's not causing a problem on his property, but it's still an issue, because he doesn't want the water there. You know, so, my concern is, this seventeen thousand and eighty-five hundred dollar fix can set a precedence to where we're, the city's gonna have to spend millions, and these are just the areas that I'm aware of. The moment we do this, the, the concern I have is that all these other residents are gonna come out and say, oh, I've had flooding for the last ten, fifteen years, and the city approved my, my plat, when the house was built in nineteen fifty somewhere, and, and that's my concern.
I think the difference there between ours and the other situations you're talking about, is the city has already attempted to fix the problem once.
What, what fix did the city attempt to do?
They did the drainage issue that was supposed to take the water from into McVederen Lake. It didn't work, as the mayor stated earlier.
When was that?
The city has tried. I don't, I do not know that. I just know the residents told me that.
And Jim wants to say something?
Mr. Clennard, our, he is our engineer.
McVederen Lake was never designed to solve this problem. McVederen Lake was eliminated in the small stormwater detention pond. It was on Heritage Fields, is that what you're Heritage Gardens, or? Would eliminate that. That was a, you know, stormwater detention for much broader river. The waste out of the water. It also was to create a drainage system. That was intended to solve the drainage issues that were happening in the Woodbridge and Woodbridge and Woodbridge. It wasn't a complicated issue.
If, if I'm, if I'm correct, that drain, that water drains from way up by the.
Back to wire mesh.
Yeah. Yeah, and it comes, well, down some way and, and hits there and move on. I would...
So, the major problem was that there were two duplexes built across the drainage system. One of them was the two seventeen A and B, and the next one, both of them both across the drainage stream, and drainage trails never traveled around those homes. That should, if that residents want, that would be my, this contract was holding the house, and we were managing it. How about what we're expecting? And any of them would process this. This is why the city gets worse together, like, we're expecting.
And I said, and I said that that night that we met.
This, this is where the residents need the council's help.
Let me, let me suggest this. Let me suggest this, that we table it, because this has to be discussed in, in open sessions. Can't be no executive session or anything like that. And it would be permissible, if I'm mistaken, if I would talk with each one of the commissioners to see if we can't find some, some way to, to resolve this.
Again, we're not looking to point fingers. We're just looking to.
I, I understand that, Tony, I appreciate that.
So, so I, I actually am opposed to that. I, I'd prefer it all to be talked about in open session, every single bit of it, because when I went to that meeting, I felt a little railroaded. I, I wanna help, I wanna help, but I felt a little railroaded, because I was bombarded by all the residents there that, you know, to me, if we speak about this in open session, there's three thousand seven hundred and fifty other residents that, that I have to think about.
But that's not us, respectfully, Commissioner. We're, we're bringing our problem here in a respectful way, trying to find a solution. If you felt railroaded, you didn't say anything that, we were respectful as possible.
No, I, alright, let me. We did, we did. Let me rephrase that. I feel, I felt like I was the only one at that meeting that was concerned about the cost of a checkbook.
And how did we end that? Because I remember specifically stating to you that, you know, we're not opposed to helping put money towards this, that either each of the residents, we have to figure out where that is and how, how it works out. And again, to, Commissioner, I, this is why I said about precedent, setting bad precedent versus setting good precedent. You have residents that are coming up that aren't saying any something for free. We're looking to try and fix the problem for the long term.
And I respect that, and when you said that, it, it made me rethink it a little bit, and I, I think that's a great way to go about it.
You know, we're not trying to agree with, we're just trying to find.
No, I get it. If, if we wanna do a cost-sharing type thing, I, I don't know. If, if the council wants to approve something like that as a whole, at least, at least there's something that gives an option for the rest of the areas of the city to do. I just, I, I mean, the other thing I have to bring up is, this was brought up to the other councils before us, right? And it never even brought up for action, because it said, the law, from my understanding, and the emails that I saw, is the attorney said, it's not the city's responsibility, and it never even came to the floor to talk about.
The other councils weren't interested in assisting the residents, that I, that I can't.
What I'm saying is, we're here, and we, we, we did look at that stuff. I mean, I'm, I'm happy to, to go to those meetings, and, and we, we did put engineering costs forward. There is a solution on the table, at least, so there has been some action. So I, I don't wanna leave this meeting thinking that the city is just trying to leave residents out to dry, because that's not the case. That's really not the case. I realize that was a bad pun when I say out to dry, but. So, I, I don't have a, I, I just think this has to be talked about in open session, because if, you, you, when you start talking about stuff in closed doors and stuff like that, that's when some of the other residents ask questions like, well, what the heck's going on with that? Why is that, why did that, why did these residents get that? Oh, it wasn't even talked about, and, and stuff like that. I'm trying to avoid that.
I have one more thing. The seventeen five codes broke up into two different areas, correct? I believe one of them is the drainage going more south, and the other one being a separate concept.
My understanding was the eighty-five hundred dollar one was the one that was small, solving the issue with the, the lot that fills up. And my understanding, though, even though that would solve a lot of problems for minor rainfall and things like that, I'm told, the main section that's between the houses is not large enough to capture everything. So even if you had a massive amount of rainfall, all, all that eighty-five hundred dollar one does is redirect it around, and it goes back into the center portion. So it's not gonna solve anything if we have a massive rainfall ever again.
So the center portion is seventeen and a half?
I'm seeing seventeen thousand plus relocation costs, which there is a ton of utility items, and there's some utilities that weren't even found yet. Like, they didn't even know where the, uh, the, the gas line is. So that's why I talked about the eighty-five hundred would at least solve your lighter rain problems that you would have there, but it would not solve the major issues. And we talked about that that night.
We just didn't have any numbers. This is where.
We have num- we have numbers now, so we're, we're moving.
This is where we ended up here.
Correct.
Let me, and, there's a number of ways that we can, we can do this. I know Jason doesn't wanna table it, but.
I don't mind tabling it.
Let's come up with a plan to resolve it. You know, as, as far as lowering the services or re, or doing some rerouting, that, that's no big thing for the electric. I don't know if the gas is involved in that at all. Does your gas come in the front or the back? The back? Okay. We gotta make sure where that's at. There's a, there's a number of, of different ways that we can do this. I, I would prefer to recommend that we table it right, right now, and that we come up with a, with a plan that's, with cost numbers on how to resolve it. Because we're not gonna get here tonight with doing that.
I expect that. There's still some other costs for real, and utilities that we just have, there's unknown there, so.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know how much it'd be for, for cable and phone. You know, as, as far as the electric, that, that's no big deal. I've done that all my life, or part of it, anyway. Let's table it, take a look, and see if we can come up with a plan, not just say no.
Sounds fair. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, guys.
But I have a motion and second to do that.
I'll make a motion to table the drainage issues at Heritage and Oakwood Avenues.
Second.
Aye.
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 Aye. Next is, discuss, take, take action if necessary, quotes regarding the well pump.
So, in your packets, there is, I have four different quotes from different agencies to repair the, the well issue that we have. The, the problem was, the, the quotes aren't a hundred percent apples to apples. There, there's a cost for pulling the pump, there's a cost for placing the pump back in, and then there's costs, different costs associated, depending on what kinda work has to be done. And the problem is, once the pump is pulled, we don't a hundred percent know what exact work has to be done to fix it. We have an idea and a couple We have an idea and a couple of options. So the one I'm recommending is the Great Lakes Water Resource Group. Theirs seem to have the least amount of cost to all the individual repair items for whatever could be wrong with it. So that's why I'd be recommending for us to go with putting that one on the file. Anybody have any questions about the whole thing?
We won't know until, until they pull the pump. What work has to be done.
Yeah, they, they gave us a, a couple of ideas of what they think, obviously it could be the, the pump in general. They think it could be a hole somewhere in something. So it's obviously not the entire price tag that's in there, but that's if we had to replace everything. So we just don't know which item's going to be the problem. So, if there's no other questions, I'll make a motion to place on file the quote for the well pump repair from Great Lakes Water Resource Group Incorporated.
Second.
Augur Ray.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye.
Aye.
Car.
Aye.
That's his old business.
I do have, oh, sorry.
I have something. That's the pool credits slash lawn and sod credits. I know we talked this thing to death last, at last meeting. The, um, if we would buy one of these meters, it's like two hundred and eighty dollars or something like that.
So, yeah, I...
And, and, and the concern of the council was just to, to put an app on a phone, there wouldn't be any way to, um, regulate it if that's proper terminology with it. But I, I looked at these pool credits and they're, uh, I think I, I see of a, a high of a hundred and sixty-seven and, and as low as eight dollars and sixty-one cents.
That was my same item as well. I do have a couple of things for that. So, since I had a big meeting with the engineers, I was able to get a little more detail on stuff. So, for, for what's already in the ordinance, they have a thing in there to where somebody could put a, a meter to measure the amount of outflow for sewage people have. Well, at first I thought that cost is only about fifteen hundred. That cost to get a outflow meter for that is estimated to be around twenty thousand dollars. Uh, there is a cheaper way to do it with an ejector pump and a mag meter. Gets down to about twelve thousand. So as you can see, the cost is so high, it's not very effective for any kind of residential and probably for most businesses unless it be a really large business. The mobile spigot meter is, is two hundred and seventy-five dollars. Some of the problems with that is, they're kind of designed to be like in Florida, places where they're not going to freeze. If those go outside and go attached to the garden hose, they have to be either brought in in the wintertime or, or the city's got to uninstall it and take them back because they will break with the freeze. I just don't think that's something, unless the council wants to go this route, I don't think that's something I think we want to be doing. Especially, even if we've had the residents pay for it, two hundred and seventy-five dollars, the amount of savings they make, as you've even seen, an entire pool, the largest pools we have in the city is like a hundred and sixty bucks. I think the average of those was like fifty to sixty dollars, and that's an entire pool's worth. I just don't know if it's really worth it doing that. I did have a, a counter suggestion I was thinking about putting together was a, a policy. Since we already have an unwritten policy that we do for the pool credits, we have an unwritten policy, what we do for somebody that has a running toilet once. I was thinking about putting something in there for an unwritten policy about sod. If somebody were to come sod and they bring the receipt to City Hall, we could go about doing something like they get a one-time credit. I don't have a good solution for lawns, gardens, washing cars, things of that nature.
Well, and expand that to new houses, because obviously they got to plant grass or sod either way too.
Grass seed, yeah, all those issues.
What if we just hadn't inspected? If somebody, somebody killed off their whole lawn is going to plant new, why couldn't we have an official go by, see that they are indeed reseeding their lawn, and then give them the same credit you're giving for the sod?
That's not a bad idea. But what are you going to do about any time somebody wants to put a patch in or something and they want to reseed just a small patch?
Well, I think you have to have a square footage or, or square yards attached to it like we were talking before with the sod. We're not going to let somebody buy one strip of sod and get a water credit for, for water in one strip they're replacing in an area. We want somebody who's doing a certain amount of an area, wouldn't you think?
I wouldn't have a problem with that. I...
But to kill your grass plant, I, that's, the amount of work that that would take, you might as well just buy sod anyway. So, I mean, I know one of our neighbors did that. He killed off his whole lawn. I don't know if he had weeds or what. And I couldn't believe how well it grew back. I thought he was kind of not thinking straight when he did it, but it turned out nice. Probably planted long fescue and that's wild.
He can grow grass better than I can.
I mean, I'm, I'm all for finding ways that we can save residents money on, on things like that. If there's an easier way to do it. If you, I don't know. I, I don't have anything in writing for the, uh, the pool credits. We've just been doing that. And it seems that, everybody seems pretty happy with that. If we'd like to do something, come up, I can come up with a, a policy about...
You got it, man.
All right. I'll come up with a policy and I'll show it to you guys.
You volunteered.
That's fine. I'm not volunteering to inspect the houses for the seed. It just, uh, just the policy.
I can't grow grass at all. Commissioner reports.
I have nothing to report tonight, Dom.
I don't have anything, Mayor.
The only thing I got is, um, we talked about this a while ago. We, we did approve, uh, some valve replacements. And next Tuesday is we're going to start some replacements of, of the isolation valves on Walnut Street. I don't have a final date of when it's all going to be done, but because of the valves that we're buying, they should be able to be done live and residents should not see any kind of impact. That's all I got.
Hey, thank you. I've got a few things. Fifty-fifty, uh, for a food truck event was six hundred and seventy dollars. The split was three thirty-five. Ogusby Way will, will get that. And Chief Hayes was the winner of the fifty-fifty drawing. Move on here. Community news. We are Ogusby. We are, uh, we are a group of residents and business owners forming a nonprofit organization called We Are Ogusby. And we need your help. Our mission is community improvements and economic growth. Our vision is to revitalize Ogusby, highlight existing business, welcome new business, host and promote events. They are having, uh, we are getting ready to kick off our first meeting on August seventeenth at the Ogusby Els. Doors and bar open at six P.M. with the social hour, including appetizers and cash bar, before the meeting at seven P.M. We would enjoy your attendance. We want to hear everyone's ideas on how together we can achieve our goals for the city of, of Ogusby. So, bear with me because I've just... So, please come to the meeting. And that's what they're, that's what they're asking for and, uh, they deserve our support. The, uh, couple of things. The Inflation Reduction Act that was passed will benefit Ogusby as the I M E A gains, gains access to refundable direct payment tax credits. The Illinois Department of Transportation has filed a charging station program. Ogusby has been listed as a potential site and we will do everything in our power to get that here. The charging stations, from what I understand, have to be located a mile from the interstate. I want to thank everyone that worked to make Ogusby Food Truck Car Show a great success. The LaSalle County Cruisers who put it together. We are looking, uh, to make this an annual event. I did mention last week that Jim Sonny Bottomley did his first major league game on the eighteenth of August in nineteen twenty-two. He was elected to the Hall of Fame in nineteen seventy-four. Played in four World Series, twenty-six, twenty-eight, thirty, and thirty-one. Had a twelve RBI game in twenty-four. In nineteen ninety-nine, uh, the Chicago Tribune listed him as a major league all-star first baseman for the twentieth decade. And he had a batting average of three-ten. Wasn't too shabby. Got another little thing. And, uh, I've done this. It has to be checked. But basically, um, it's a comparison. And if there's an error, it falls on Dom Revore. Sometimes my math isn't the best, but in this case, it's pretty good. And what I did is I took a, a bill from, from Ameren Com Ed in Ogusby for last month and listed. You got your electric from, uh, from Ogusby, or rather from Ameren. It was a hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-seven cents. From Com Ed had been a hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy cents. And for Ogusby, it would have been a hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty-three cents. So I think we're doing a pretty good job. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Augur Ray.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye.
Aye.
Car.
Aye.
Tommy, any comments on this?
It's a, it's not a, it's a, uh...
Those are no fun ones.